Welcome everyone to the 2015 Saddlebrook Board of Education Meet the Candidates Night. If each of the candidates, could you just say your name and for two minutes tell us why you're running, a bit about yourself, your background? We'll start with Stephen Quinn.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for showing up tonight. As you know, I'm Steve Quinn. I've been on the board for finishing my third year and running for my second term. My time on the board, I have served on several committees, including the Budget Committee, Negotiations Committee, Technology Committee, and Buildings and Grounds Committee, which I was serving on when we worked up everything to pass the referendum. I've also gone through both an interim search for a superintendent and a superintendent search, and to be honest with you, I never thought at the end of my first term, we would be looking at starting the same way that I started my first term. For those that don't know, we are in the process of looking for an interim superintendent, and we'll be doing a superintendent search for the new superintendent of the district. In addition to that, I've coached in recreational athletics programs, most of the programs we have at one time or another. I have two children, sixteen and fourteen, that both go to the school district, and I think in the last two years, our school district has made great strides going forward, and made a lot of improvements, both for student achievement and as a district as a whole. My goal would be to continue that push. We've done a lot, but it's really the foundation of where we need to go, and we need to keep driving forward with all of that work.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, candidates, please hold the microphone up each time you give your answer and speak into the microphone. All right, next.
Hi, my name is Param Preet Singh. You guys can call me Param. And I got appointed to the board back in April. I filled Mr. Havison's vacancy, and I have been on the Buildings and Grounds Committee since then. We were part of the process to attempt to get a new school lunch provider. It didn't work out. We only received one bid, but we did try to replace them. And a little bit of background for me, I have been here since elementary school. I went to Long Memorial School, went to the middle school here, and went to the high school here. And then I graduated in 2010, went on to the College of New Jersey, graduated there in 2014, and I'm currently at Rutgers Law in Newark. Some experience that I bring, I have worked for the United States Congress for Office of Steve Rothman. I have worked for the United States Senate for Bob Menendez, and I've worked for the State of New Jersey, Office of the Governor. And for the Senator's Office and the Governor's Office, I worked in their education department, so I have a lot of experience with developing policy and in regards to implementing the policy, as well as sort of evaluating school performances. In addition, this past summer, I worked for McElroy Deutsch Malvanian Carpenter. It's a law firm based in Moorestown. They have about thirteen offices in seven different states. I'll be going back there next summer. I got to work with some of the stuff on education there too, but mostly it was focused on things that don't really apply here. And one of my main focuses is to improve student performance, given the fact that I've been through the school. I know where exactly we lag and what actually needs to be improved. But in addition to that, I think there needs to be more transparency from the side of the board, and the town needs to be more involved with what we do, and the town needs to be more informed with what's actually happening behind the scenes. And I want to increase the town involvement with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Param. Joe.
Hello, my name is Joseph Nogito. I moved into Saddlebrook. I've been here for about ten years. I'm a product of Hasbro Heights School System. I went to K through twelve. I have an Associate's degree in Communications. I am on the Little League Board of Ed. I've been there for over four years. I've been a coach. I've coached flag football along with Little League. I'm married, thirteen years. I have a son who's in fourth grade, who attends Helen Smith School. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I'm fully engaged in my son's education. And the board has made a lot of great progress within the past couple of years, and I'm really excited about it. And I want to get involved. I want to help continue the growth. You know, there's a lot of areas of improvement. There's always going to be improvement in anything in life. You know, nothing's always going to be perfect. But you know, I'd definitely like to focus in on our needs of improvement, you know, with the way the curriculum is structured. I would like to maybe introduce a laptop program. I want to get everything on an E-format, bring everything a little bit up to speed. I mean, I want to address the safety policy in our school. We've had a recent issue in the school. I think it's bad that it happened, but in a way, it shows a little bit of our weakness and where we need to improve on. I'd like to definitely push forward, like to work with the police department in ways we could help further, you know, the safety of our teachers and our students. And I'm just here for the kids. I'm not here for anything else but that. I'm fully committed to the children. I am open to any idea whatsoever that could transition us to be number one. My goal is to be number one. Like, I feel that, you know, there's a lot of surrounding towns above us, around us, that are doing, you know, a lot better than us, and I think we need to really look at them and try to figure out what is it they're doing that we can maybe implement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now, I'm going to ask you several questions that residents have asked beforehand and written down on index cards, and you'll each have one minute to answer the same question. Okay. So first question. What do you see as the number one challenge facing our district today? We'll start with Stephen.
Thank you. I think the number one challenge to our district is the same that it has been for a few years now, and that's increasing student achievement. That is the number one priority of any educational system, and we need to continue working very hard to improve the education of our students and make this district a great district.
Okay.
I agree with Steve. I think it's student performance, but I think there's ways that student performance has improved in the past couple of years, especially since I've graduated here. But I don't think we are focusing on the right things. We're focusing on increasing AP enrollment and things of that nature, which really only affects a very small percentage of the actual students in this district. I think we need to look at the bigger picture and get the average student to perform better because otherwise, they fall through the cracks, they graduate from here, and they end up taking the same classes over at Bergen Community College, and I think that's something that we really, really need to focus and improve on. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree as well. You know, we definitely have to, you know, increase the way the students are performing. We definitely have to focus in on our results. The state puts out results of exactly how our children are being, how they rate compared to other school districts. We need to, you know, look at those line items and focus in on that. That's it.
Okay. So even with these challenges, do you feel that the district is moving in the right direction? Please explain why or why not. We'll start with Joe this time.
Okay, yeah, the district definitely is moving in the right direction. I know that the state results don't show that, but I truly believe we're on the eve of pushing through. I think we need to really continue the growth of the academics. You know, we're definitely progressing, you know? I know the results don't really show that we're progressing in all the areas, but overall, the way that the Board of Ed has repositioned the curriculum, I think that within time, it's going to prove about the decisions that they've made. And, you know, that's something that we definitely have to focus on.
I agree. I think we're taking steps in the right direction, especially given I graduated in 2010, and my brother actually graduated last year. And just between those five years, I kept in touch with him, obviously, and he's informed me now all the nice changes that we've made in the district, but I don't think it's enough. I think we need to keep pushing. We're there, but we still need to keep improving. Otherwise, we'll just end up in the same position we were five years ago and just get used to it, and I don't think that that's a good way for us to approach this.
Yes, I believe the district is heading in the right direction. As I stated before, I think where you've worked at building a very good foundation to move forward from. I also think it's incorrect to say that we're focusing on AP classes. We have done a lot of initiatives in the last two years across the board for all students, including FODA kindergarten, which is critical all the way up through, from the time they start kindergarten to the time they graduate. We've also started Writer's Workshop in all the elementary schools, the Orton Gilliam Training that is in the K through three program. We have established a new schedule, which has allowed not only more instruction time, but has made sure that there's less than thirty students in every high school class. The list goes on. Everybody likes to talk about AP classes because it's one of the things that we are actually judged on when it comes to the reports that come out, and it's a good thing to do that. But we're also focusing on the average students. The special ed program has made massive changes to benefit all of the students as well. So we're working across the board with all students to improve everybody's education, and that's how I hope we continue.
Okay, thank you. As each of you mentioned, the district has seen major changes in the last two years, specifically with staff. Now we have three elementary principals resigning, as well as the superintendent. How do you, how would you approach handling the resignation of the staff and the turnover? And how will you approach handling these changes in the district? We'll start with Param.
I mean, there's really nothing you personally can do to stop people from leaving their jobs or quitting midway. The only thing we can do is try to hire the right people that are here to stay, as opposed to using our district as stepping stones.
Thank you. As Param said, there's no way to change someone to a job or keep them when they don't want to be here. We have had a lot of turnover. Some of it, I think, is really just normal turnover, both in the cycling of our district and the recent turnovers, and with the new superintendent. I don't think that was unusual or truly unexpected. With the superintendent leaving, yes, that does create a lot while we're midway through a process of improving our district. Our job as a board is to find the very best superintendent we can to continue the progress we've made and continue driving us forward. We work hard to do it, as a board can, to take care of the personnel, the administration, and support them in everything they do, and hopefully they will realize that.
Yeah, they're right. There's nothing you could do. If somebody decides to leave a job, they're allowed to do that. But, you know, we did give Dr. Katz a five-year contract, so moving forward, maybe it might be something that might not be wise to do, maybe a three-year contract with merit bonuses attached to it. And yeah, and when we do look to hire people during the interview process, we need to flat out and come out and tell them, say, "Look, this is what has been going on in our school district." You know, people come here, they hang out here for a year or two, they go get another job where they're making more money, or it's a better environment for them, and they leave. And we need to really try to hold people to it. Say, you know, "Yeah, you have the right to leave your job, but, you know, we're dealing with children here," you know? And people got to be, you know, held a little bit more accountable when it comes to kids.
Okay, thank you. Soon the board will be interviewing for a new superintendent. What question would you ask the candidate, if you could ask one question right now? And what would you be looking for in an answer? We'll start with Stephen.
Not sure that's truly appropriate to answer directly, but indirectly, my main focus and the questions I'm going to want to know about is the academic achievement he has been able to, or she has been able to achieve in other districts. It's going to be about budgeting process, and their theories on education, and what they see as a way to drive this in particular district forward.
I would ask them what they did before and why they think that whatever they achieved before would fit this school district. I would ask them, you know, why do they want to come to Saddlebrook? Because if it's not for the kids, or if it's not for a long-term commitment, then we don't want someone like that, even if they've achieved everything in the world in their past employment.
Well, we need to look at their body of work. Me personally, I think we should go after the top-ten school district in New Jersey. You know, try to bring those superintendent or principals into our school district. You know, to me, that's important, and you could have the greatest resume in the world, but at the end of the day, what is it that you do?
Okay. School safety is always an important issue. How would you handle issues of violence perceived, students against students, violence committed by students against other students, or incidents like that? What would your approach be to dealing with such reported incidents? Stephen.
Well, I guess this is a good point, to make people understand the role of the board, and that is in planning, policy, appraisal, and oversight. An individual board member has absolutely no power to do anything. It is only through the actions of the entire board that the board can act on anything. That said, we are not in charge of, nor should we have anything to do with, the daily interactions of the students, the discipline of the students, or anything of that nature. As far as school safety goes, we are, this coming summer, starting the safety part of the referendum, and also it's about looking at our policies and seeing how we as a board can improve our policies in order to best protect all of our students, because that's really the only place we have true power over that situation.
I know Steve addresses that we can't really do anything about it, but then, on the other hand, we're in charge of the policy. So I think there's plenty of changes we can make to policies that would let us, you know, address certain situations, certain situations that might have happened last week or in the past, where we don't respond to those situations in the same way, where we improve our policies so we can respond differently and more efficiently to those types of situations to improve safety in our schools.
Yeah, Param is right. I mean, that's why we're sitting here today. We're here to, you know, find out what's our avenues, where we're weak, and we got to look to improve on. For one, I'm all for armed guards in our schools. You know, some people might disagree, but let's face reality here. We live in a very hard world when we grew up as kids. I don't know the exact number, but I want to say it might have been around forty school shootings last year between colleges and schools. I mean, we can't wait for our government to do something. We have to go on and make defensive decisions when it comes to protecting our kids.
Parents have also expressed concern about gangs, specifically in the high school. How would you address this in policy, if you could address this in policy? Stephen?
Let's repeat again, thank you. Well, actually, the board has on Wednesday's agenda a new state policy that's coming down on addressing gangs, gang relationships, all things that are considered gang activity or gang-like, and the definitions thereof. That is a state policy we must follow. Now that that will be going into effect, we need to look at, see if there's anything more we can do with our policy to even better protect our students from that gang presence.
Okay, Param.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you know, there's this state policy that's recently been introduced that we have to implement in our schools, but I think, you know, after implementing it for a year or two or three, we need to, after a certain amount of time, we need to evaluate our policies, and we need to change them depending on whether we need to make things stricter, or whether we need to discipline kids in a different way, but that we need to constantly evaluate our policies and our situation as a school district.
When it comes to gang activity, we have to rely on our police department to help us out. I mean, we ask so much of our schoolteachers on a daily basis, you know, and, you know, if we're going to, you know, have the schoolteachers start figuring out gang activity, I mean, how much more are we going to ask from them? You know, the police department is there, they do a great job. We need to have the police department involved when it comes to gang activities.
Okay, thank you. What are your three overall education priorities that in a perfect world, you would accomplish during your term? We'll start with Param.
Sure. In a perfect world, I would, you know, increase student performance, improve student performance, obviously. But I also am concerned with leveling the elementary schools. I know there are certain schools that perform better than others, and I don't want that, in a way, to negatively influence any other school where the school that's performing better, I want the other schools to reach that level. So everyone going into middle school, everyone going into high school is on the same level as opposed to the middle school and high school teachers trying to play catch-up with one student and one student, and, you know, sort of ignoring another student. And the last one, I really do think it's time that we introduce more technology in our classes. I think it's 2015 going into 2016 now, and our students know more about laptops and applications more than we do, so I think it's time that we utilize them.
Yeah, definitely student performance. There has been a trend, as long as my son's been in the schools, that all three elementary schools have their own different ways on how they do things, and they're all, you know, up to different speeds. We need to have them all on the same page. And yeah, as Param said, definitely with the technology. You know, my son, all he knows is a tablet and laptops. He doesn't know a typewriter, or, you know, going through the book and, you know, indexing things like that. It's all technology. It's just getting faster and faster, and, you know, we have to introduce that as a young age.
Yeah, as everyone would say, better education, becoming the number-one school district in the state of New Jersey in a perfect world would be awesome. That would include creating new spaces in order to have a complete, full STEM lab situation technology available for all of our students. It would mean creating a separate middle school, which I think would do great things for both the education and the overall child, if they had their own middle school. And I think it's very important to consider not only the education of every child, but the overall growth of every child. And that means something different to almost every child, and we have to make sure we focus and let them grow up to be who they should be.
Okay. Joe, how will you improve relations between the board and the district administration?
Definitely have to have more dialogue. You know, we need to get kind of real-time results. We shouldn't wait on, you know, monthly meetings. You know, if we could open up more dialogue between the administration and the Board of Ed, you know, I would like to get some type of performance, you know, possibly week to week, exactly how are the kids performing compared to certain tests and things like that. I think we need to kind of have all that information available to us in an E-format, where we could make, you know, quick decisions with the information that's right in front of us.
I agree. I think we need more updates. We need constant updates, but not just to us. We need constant updates to the parents. The parents need to know what's going on. The parents need to be allowed to be part of the system, part of this process. Otherwise, you know, if the parents are kept in the dark about all this, and then they come to the one monthly meeting or two monthly meetings, if they can even make it, then, you know, by then, the thing they want to address is already done, and it's been three weeks since it's been done. So I think we need to keep the parents in the loop, and we need just constant updates about what's actually going on in our schools.
As a personal board member, I think I have very good communication and working relationship with the administration. We get weekly updates every week from our superintendent. That includes a wide range of everything going on. If there's any questions, all you have to do is call any administrator we have, and they will either answer it on the spot or get back to you as soon as they have a chance to get that information to you. It's not hard for a board member to stay in the loop and know what's going on if they make the effort to make sure communication's a two-way street. I do agree with Param, though, that we need to get better parent involvement. We've tried many initiatives. We have a superintendent's page, which I'm not sure anybody's asked a superintendent on his page, which I don't think anyone's been on since March. We do district blogs. All the schools are now doing newsletters. So if anybody has suggestions on how to get better community and parent involvement, please let us know. We would like that. We want to drive in that direction, but we need your help.
So specifically, what would you do to increase parent involvement? We'll start, do we ask that question? No? We'll start with Param.
Personally, I think there are initiatives in place right now for parent involvement, but there's tons of room for improvement. We can make a Facebook page that is just administered by the board. We don't comment on it. Where parents can just let us know what's happening, you know? If your kid has a bad lunch, you let us know. You put a picture of it, or just let it, anything that you can comment and keep us in the loop, because otherwise, like I said, something could have happened three weeks ago, and you don't even get a chance to let us know. So maybe opening up a Facebook page that would just let the entire district comment on it, we wouldn't really be able to comment back, but we can take those things into consideration. We can start making changes regarding those situations that might come up, you know, three weeks before a meeting.
Well, I'm a parent, and, you know, I think how to promote, you know, parent involvement is transparency. You know, there's a lot of parents out there that complain about lunch programs and, you know, the way things are being operated, and they feel sometimes that, you know what? They're going to do what they want anyway. And, you know, that has a lot to do with it. That has a lot to do with transparency, I mean, in parent involvement. You know, if we could figure out ways where we could open up the communication a little bit bigger, a little better for the parents, yeah, I think that would definitely bring on more parent involvement.
Yeah, we tried many methods. We've been talking about opening up and doing more with social media. We've established parent nights, eighth-grade nights, parent orientation nights. We haven't got a lot of great numbers of people showing up, kind of like tonight. We have a candidate's night, and although I'm glad everybody's here, it would be nice to have more of a community involvement in it. And I think we do have to show that we are concerned about the parents' issues and dealing with it. One of the things I think we might need to do, or I've thought about possibly seeing if the board would be interested in moving forward with, is actually developing a page for parents to actually know where to go or who to talk to about certain issues. It seems a part of the problem is parents don't know who to talk to about what. So I think maybe if we just have on our website, if it's an issue concerning this, call this person; issues concerning that, talk to that person. So they know who to reach out as a first contact, and hopefully that would help greatly with getting more people involved.
One parent wants to know if you have any ideas toward making schools better equipped for special education students. We'll start with Stephen.
I will be very honest with you, that is not my forte, so I really can't answer in great detail. But I do know that in the last two years, under David Rose's supervision, our special ed program has made a lot of progress. We've started a life program in a high school to keep schools in the district, to help special ed students. We are constantly trying to find new ways to do that. But that is one of the areas that I think we need to give the direction to the professionals that know what they're doing, and allow them the best way to move our special ed program forward.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and pretend I know a lot about special education, but I do know enough that I would be willing to go through training to find new ways to actually address situations like that, but I would also provide more aids for the students. I know that's a huge, huge help. I know studies have shown it's a huge help. Our implementation of aids for the students have shown it's a huge help, and, you know, increasing the number of aids available to the students and increasing opportunities available for the students to interact and also just mingle with the other students is very beneficial for them.
Yeah, I don't know personally a lot about special education, but yeah, I'm willing to learn and to figure out any idea. I think one idea might be is to keep the kids, as much as you can mainstream, with the other children, and keep them a part of everything. If I think back to when I was a kid, things were a little bit more isolated, where people were removed. So I think that could be an avenue that we could look to go down to.
Okay, thank you. Another parent wants to know if one of your top priorities would be addressing and improving the school playgrounds and improving safety on the playgrounds. Stephen?
Yes, I think we need to improve safety, and although we've, again, we've done a lot of work towards that, in all areas of the school. Playgrounds, as well as the gyms, we have had a couple of different initiatives, looking at the safety of that, to make sure everything is safe as we can for the children. When I was done and said, that's a very big point, and I think we need to address all issues quickly and efficiently.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I know that there are things being done now to improve, you know, things such as landscaping, but I think, you know, the structure of the playgrounds and the structure of the fields really need to be addressed, and maybe we need to form a committee or some sort of, you know, organization within the school where someone addresses these issues and actually goes out and gets things done, as opposed to just saying that we'll do it.
Yeah, I agree. The fields, they need a lot of work. The playgrounds definitely need a lot of work. Considering that we have a 2% cap every year, something like that would probably have to do on a major platform where all the schools, the playgrounds and the fields are addressed at the same time. More than likely going to have to go referendum with that. But yeah, I absolutely agree that all the fields and the playgrounds need to be addressed.
Another parent wants to know, how do you feel about the elementary students taking Italian? Italian? We have it in Saddlebrook because of a minimal grant, but it's not offered in middle or high school. Is that a program you'd want to expand into the middle and high school, if you could? Stephen?
Yes, I, I think basic business math, basic business principles is an excellent thing for all students to learn, whether it's accounting, personal finances.
We, I'm sorry, we said, I said Italian program, Italian language.
Oh, Italian.
Italian language. Accounting, Italian, no. The Italian language program.
And I knew we'd started the finance program, so thank you. Start over. I think, and I would definitely support, starting foreign languages in kindergarten and having it a full curricular course every year that they are in the school district. I think not only is it beneficial for students to be bilingual, but just the process of learning a foreign language is an incredible help to the education of a child and is applied in many other areas. So yes, I believe in foreign languages in the school district, and I would love to see it across the board.
Yeah, I agree, and I personally think it's silly to have Italian in elementary school and then not have it for the kids in middle school or high school, then what's the point? And I think, you know, as many languages as we can introduce, the better. It helps, especially in a global economy like today, it'll help them more than we can imagine. It'll prepare them, like we always talk about career readiness, it'll prepare them more than we can even imagine. So I would agree. I would expand it into the middle school, into the high school, and if we, if the budget allows us, I would introduce even more languages.
Yeah, I, I think it is silly, you're right, to have it in elementary school and not have it in the high school. But I, it should be on a voluntary basis as far as maybe Italian, Spanish. I know in the Fairlawn District, they, you get to pick when you're in elementary school, whatever language you want to concentrate on as a child, and then you carry that all the way into high school. So that's something that I think, though, we should maybe consider.
Another parent writes, in the past year, there have been a lot of changes in pre-K through third-grade programs. What program do you think needs the most improvement, and what would you do to improve the program? Stephen?
I really can't say what program needs the most improvement over any other program. I don't feel comfortable actually saying this program or that program needs more attention. They all need attention. They all need to be improved, and I think everybody, all the programs equally need to be moved forward, and I'm not gonna single out just one program to focus on.
Yeah, I agree with Steve, but I think if it was only implemented for one year, I think we need more time to actually assess it unless there's something about a specific program that's lagging. And I also, I don't really agree with implementing four or five new programs and then not being able to focus on any of them. I think that's not a good way to do things around here. I think we need to implement one or two, focus on those, and once they develop, implement new programs.
Yeah, I agree. You know, we, we need to implement programs and give them time to work, and, you know, we could reassess how those programs are going throughout the course. You know, it'd be silly to just implement a whole bunch of different programs every year without really having any information as far as if this is successful in our district or not, but, you know, we should always consider, you know, reevaluating everything.
So what in your backgrounds or your life experience aids in your position as a trustee? What do you think you bring to the board as a trustee that's unique, that makes you stand out? Stephen?
Other than three years on, on the board, my background is in technical theater and design, management. I have a lot of various backgrounds that gave me great life experiences, from working with large groups of people, working with crews, hiring people, unfortunately, a couple of times firing people. I actually taught at a college level, so I've had a lot of experience throughout my life that goes towards this. My wife being a teacher herself also gives me another perspective to the whole situation. And I think really what qualifies me is the fact that I've spent three years on the board, and I truly understand what our role is, and hopefully understand how to move the district forward going from this point.
Yeah, I think what really gives me the experience is actually having been through the schools here, all the way from elementary through high school. I've been through them. I know where things need to improve. I know things that were great, that worked, that actually we've gotten rid of. So there's plenty of things that I can address just by my experience through that. But in addition to that, you know, I have mentored students when I was in high school. I've mentored students when I was in college, and I've actually currently tutored two kids while going to law school. So I know how to, I know what kids response, respond to. I know how they interact with each other. I know what they hide from their parents, and I know what things actually really need to be addressed. And personally, I'm open to any suggestions from anyone. If anyone got my letters in the mail, I've listed my cellphone on that. You can contact me anytime and let me know what things need to be improved, and I'm all ears.
I feel, you know, I'm a father who's engaged in his son's education. You know, I've been employed with Verizon for seventeen years. I specialize in communications, it's what I do. I'm a really good listener. I'm the type of person who just goes with the flow. You know, I'm a leader. I speak up when I feel like I have to be, you know, my opinion has to be heard. You know, I'm here basically for the kids. You know, I'm a resident of Saddlebrook. I'm an investor. I invested inside this community. I purchased a home. I want to see this district be the reason why people want to move to Saddlebrook. I mean, let's face, let's face it, we have to give the public a reason, like, why should I purchase a home in Saddlebrook? The schools play a major, important role in why people look for certain homes in different towns.
Okay, that's all the questions we have. So, thank you very much. Okay, so you will each get two minutes to sum up your reasons for wanting to be on the board. All right, we'll start with Joe.
Yeah, you know, as I said before, I'm a father that's engaged in his son's education. I'm here strictly because I want to help out the Board of Ed, I want to improve things, I want to make things better. You know, I talk to a lot of parents. You know, there's a lot of parents out there that are maybe afraid to speak up, but they have a lot of great ideas. I'm a great listener. You could call me anytime, my email address. I just want to make, I want to improve everything, you know? I feel that, you know, we have a great township here. I love living in the town. I think there's a lot of hard-working people in the town. I think we have a lot of great teachers in the town, and I just want to do everything I can to push us to number one. That, I really feel like we could accomplish that. You know, we just all have to be on the same page, and we have to be willing to make, you know, certain adjustments and, you know, make decisions where one might not agree, but collectively, as a, as a member of the board, you know, our sole purpose is the reason why we're here is for the children. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think our main focus needs to be on the kids and how well they do, and just how ready they are for the real world. And I just bring a younger, newer side to the board than most people on the board right now, and I think that, you know, I've, I've been in this community for a very, very long time. I've grown up here, and I feel like I owe it to the community to now finally give back. I'm in a position where I'm not as busy with school anymore, and I think I'm at a position, I've had tons of experience that have led me to, you know, I've taken classes in education law, I have taken classes in education development in undergrad, I have tons of experience and background that would allow me to help this, our kids. There are, it's our community, and it's our kids, and I, and I think we need to treat this as a whole-community approach, and we need to be open to anything that the parents, you know, the parents need to bring issues that, and I think we need to just improve that and implement it.
Yes, as I said, I think our school district is doing a good job going forward. I think we need to continue doing a good job and even do better if we can. As a board member, I'll do everything in my power to ensure that we keep driving the education of our students as the number-one goal of this district, and truly evolving as one of the top schools in the state. That's my goal, is to be a top 100 school before I leave. I will not give up on that. I will continue fighting for all of the students in this district, and most importantly, I hope we can find a way to get more parent and community involvement, because we need your help to become that good. It takes the whole community for a school district to become great. So I hope all of you will help us create a great school district, whether you elect me or not.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.